Call to order tonight's regular city commission meeting for April 4th, 2022. Tabitha World Call, please.
Maryam?
Here.
Mr. Peck?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Leachman?
Here.
Mr. Morgan?
Present.
And for indications tonight, we have Pastor Corey Landreth with Real Life Church.
Thanks for having me.
Let's pray.
God, we thank you for this day and for the life that you have given us, and especially as we look outside and see the grass is turning green and the flowers are beginning to bloom. It is good, and it does our hard good. It feels like the last few years have been an extended winter, perhaps emotionally. And so we look for renewal now, not only of the season, but in our hearts and minds as well. Apostle Paul prayed and asked that your restoration come, and so we ask that as well, God, that you would give us a restoration, not just of the season, but a restoration of hope, restoration of peace, kindness, and love. We thank you, God, for this city and for her people. I ask that you would give wisdom, guidance to our commissioners as they lead and guide us all and work for the betterment of each and every person at every stage and place in life. We pray for strength and guidance for our city workers as well, and those who lead in each and every department. God, would you give them wisdom as well to watch over this city, to lead and guide it in a way that not only would be pleasing to you, but is good for the citizens. That's what this government is all about, good for its citizens. And so, God, we thank you for loving us and watching out for us and watching over us and bringing us to this new spring, to warmer weather, to happier hearts, and to open doors. We thank you, God, for your love, and most especially for your son, Jesus. It's in his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance. I'd like to invite our new police chief, Mike Holton, up to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, so we have a couple of proclamations tonight. I'll go through those. The first one's for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas children are key to the state's future -- sorry. Whereas children are key to the state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, and while children are our most valuable resource, they're also our most vulnerable. Whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow, and whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all, and we are, as a community, extending a helping hand to children and families in need. And whereas by providing a safe and nurturing environment for our children, free of violence, free of abuse and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas's children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and of our nation. Now therefore, I, Bill Young, Mayor of the City of El Dorado, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And the City of El Dorado, Kansas, and urge all citizens to join in this observance by resolving to end child abuse and by making ourselves aware of child abuse and the ways in which it affects our community. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of El Dorado, Kansas, to be affixed the fourth day of April 2022. We also have a Fair Housing Month proclamation. Whereas the Congress of the United States has passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, of which Title VIII declared that the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity, and whereas the City of El Dorado is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all, and today many realty companies and associations support fair housing laws, and whereas the Fair Housing Groups and the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development have, over the years, received thousands of complaints of alleged illegal housing discrimination and found too many that have proved upon investigation to be violations of the fair housing laws. And whereas equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in our city that can and should be achieved, I, Bill Young, Mayor of the City of El Dorado, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month and express the hope that this year's observance will promote fair housing practices throughout the city dated this fourth day of April 2022. Couple of pretty important things that we need to make sure that the community's aware of. Next is personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, and any presentation is for informational purposes only, and no action will be taken. Tabitha, do you have any personal appearances scheduled for tonight? Thank you. Next is public comments. Persons who wish to address the city commission regarding items that are not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction, the city commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and any presentation is for informational purposes only, and no action will be taken. Is there anyone here that would like to make public comment tonight? No. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda, we're considering the approval of city commission minutes from March 21st, 21st, 2022. We're considering lease agreements for Bobcat Excavator for Public Utilities Department at an annual cost of $9,500, and we're also considering a lease agreement for a T4 Bobcat Trackloader for Public Utilities Department at an annual cost of $8,000. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There's nothing in old business. We'll move on to agenda item number 13, new business, authorization to purchase of hazmat apparatus at the cost of $56,800.
City question, the item in front of you today is the request to purchase a hazmat apparatus unit. We have found a unit to replace our aging trailer up in New York, actually. The cost of the trailer, I believe, is -- The cost of the unit is $227,200. You will actually be approving the purchase of the agreement, or I'm sorry, of the apparatus. But if you recall earlier, we had approved a fire apparatus, I'm sorry, hazardous materials contract with Butler County, and that contract provides that the county will pay up to an amount of a hazardous materials vehicle or equipment, or however you want to say, an apparatus, up to a certain threshold. If it's used exclusively for hazardous materials. If, however, we decided to get a hazardous material, hazardous response vehicle and a fire response vehicle, then that threshold would be much lower. So because this is a standalone hazardous materials apparatus, they will pay up to 75%, which is why the item on the agenda was $56,800. So our share of the actual unit will cost $56,800, but the total cost will be $227,200. So, hold on, it's a pretty big deal. The reason that the county does this is because we provide hazardous materials response to a pretty wide area. I believe it's most of the county, I don't know.
It's the entire county.
It's the entire county. So because of that, they feel obligated to pay for a portion of that, a large portion, and we're very grateful for that. So that's what we have before you today.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am, sir.
I move to authorize the city manager to purchase the fire apparatus in accordance with the hazmat contract with Butler County.
Second. Motion is second. You all have any questions? I've got a real quick question. So Chief, is this a -- you said trailer, David. Is this a trailer apparatus, or is this a vehicle itself?
It's a vehicle itself. I believe in your package.
Yeah.
It's a vehicle itself. I believe in your package, there was a photograph of the vehicle.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah. I totally buy that page. Okay. You even said trailer, not --
Well, because I was thinking about the trailer that we have right now, that's what I was --
This unit will pull the existing trailer we have, so.
So this cost then, Chief, is just for the unit itself, and then your equipment and stuff will transfer from the old?
Will transfer from the current vehicle.
Okay, and you have all the equipment that's necessary to operate, what you need for you all to stay safe doing hazmat response?
Yep.
Okay. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the work you all do. Are there any other questions? Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is setting of a public hearing for condemnation proceedings.
Yes, this involves three parcels. There's multiple addresses of a few of these parcels, so that's why it looks like numerous. So there's three parcels within the City of El Dorado, 425 South Summit, 425 and a half South Summit, 1102 West Locust, and 1102 and a half West Locust. We're asking you to consider on that property, setting a public hearing for May 16th to consider the condemnation process on that property.
On the Summit and Locust properties?
Yeah, it is on one parcel.
Oh, that's true.
For you to --
No, that's right, that's right.
And then moving to the next, you've got 214 North Star. Well, 214 and a half North Star is a building located behind the -- behind one of the structures. So that's one we're asking you to consider setting a public hearing on that. And then 501 North Star is a standalone home. Ask you to consider that as well. In your packet, it's kind of a history on some code issues we've had on those properties, and there's photos there for you to take a look at. All of these structures are not inhabited. There's no one renting or living in these structures.
So all of these --
They're all in, notified and all that good stuff?
That's what you're doing tonight. You're saying, okay, we're going to consider this, so we will send all those folks letters. We'll send to any interested parties, some mortgage companies, if there's liens or anything else, it'll all be notified in this process of public hearing on May 16th. What that letter will also encourage those folks to do is to set up a meeting with staff and the building official prior and discuss that, because, you know, we want to be able to come to you on the 16th and have an understanding of the path here.
Scott, if, for example, you contacted them and they came in and said, okay, we can do all this stuff, is there no way they can be removed from that because the commission will have ruled that it has to be present at the public hearing?
So what, at the public hearing, you will -- it's open. You can consider different things. So the last one we did was pretty routine, like you said, a day or 30 days after the public hearing, do they remediate the problem, demo itself, or the city with them demo?
Okay.
There was one property owner that came before you all and said, hey, I'm going to pull the permit and do some work. There was another property owner that spoke to the building official, pulled the permit, and he satisfied those conditions and is bringing that property back to code. You will probably at the May public hearing, you'll hear about the property on South Tuana where we gave an extension last for the you all that were here, were just not, there's no progress there. So it's kind of what you guys' hands, what you guys want to do, consider here the evidence from the property owner if they come here. We'll present any letters or written communication we have with them, or talk to you about what we've communicated with them as well.
Okay. Makes sense.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve that resolution number 2934, resolution authorizing the scheduling of a public hearing on May 16th, 2022 at 6:30 PM for the purpose of abating or removing the dangerous structures at 425 South Summit, 425 and a half South Summit, 1102 West Locust, 1102 and a half West Locust, 214 and 214 and a half North Star, and 501 North Star.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Are there any further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number 15, authorization to purchase sewer television equipment at the cost of $104,699.50.
So this piece of equipment will replace our sewer television equipment. And what that is, is a piece of equipment that will be basically key camera or sewer mains to determine the condition of it, whether there's any breaks, any roots, any settling that could cause the pipe to not flow correctly. So this allows us the best means of diagnosing sewer problems because we can literally get eyes on the problem. Sometimes we are able to flush situations, but where we can't, we can then back, we can then hammer it, but then also we want to just get eyes on our sewer mains from time to time, just to make sure that we know what kind of condition it is. Unfortunately, this equipment is not cheap, so we're asking you to, for $104,699.50, but it does give us the capability of addressing our diagnostics, and we have underground infrastructure on sewer.
In the note here, it says it gets a lump sum fee paid out of the sewer budget in 2022. So you have the money?
Do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the purchase of a new sewer camera system from R E D Equipment LLC and authorize the city manager to execute all appropriate paperwork.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That's it for new business, so we'll move on to city commission advisory board updates. Commissioner Wilkinson?
Parks and Rec Advisory met last week and basically spent their time going through some of the concerns, the different parks in the city, and some of the concerns that are like right now need to be dealt with. But in the process, they are coming up with a plan to submit to the commissioners to look at what they feel needs to be worked on. We did talk about Mac Stadium and all the things that need done there. They did talk about East Park and some of the ideas that Butler had, and some of the things that they, as a city see, that need to be done, and then also the other parks. So they should be having something ready. I don't know if they do yet. Okay. Okay. So that's what we did at Parks and Rec. We also had an El Dorado Inc., or Main Street meeting, and Leon can fill in if I forget something. They talked about fundraising, and again, just to remind you what those fundraising options are. They are having a garden tour in June. It's on the 12th. They also have a rain date on the 18th, and there'll be more out about that as it gets Though it's not fundraising, Monday, the 31st of October is Trick or Treat Down the Street, and the December Christmas is going to be the 2nd, the 3rd, the 4th, and Thankful Thursday's on the 1st, so there's four days of activities that'll be going on in downtown El Dorado. They're still discussing possible other fundraising opportunities. They talked about street sounds, which is an outdoor audio system that would be hooked up to different poles around town that would blast or blare music. It's done in several communities that have it. Craig Jargon looked into it, answered some of our questions. It's a discussion topic, is all it is right now, trying to figure out different ways it can be utilized, like Thankful Thursday, you know, who's having, you know, the biggest deals or what the deals are downtown, like during the Christmas time, reminding people that after the parade, they can go to the courthouse for the tree lighting, and then just during regular time, just play soft music to the shoppers downtown. So like I said, that's still in discussion. The Masonic Lodge, they are looking into grants and historical monies and are going to begin working on a plan to get it rehabilitated, knowing that it's going to take quite a while to get it done, but at least they're looking into it and hoping to get something done there. Supposed to pass on that the El Dorado Arms is no longer on the market. I guess there had been rumor that it had been sold. There had been a contract, but after further negotiation and the fact that Kevin's health has improved, he took it off the market. So Kevin Burke still owns that. Okay, I'm not sure what I meant about this note. Maybe Leon can help me. Something about open available space to market outside El Dorado, Lois?
What they're talking about is like Trick or Treat Down Main Street to bring people from outside the immediate place downtown to give them the availability of coming in and being involved in the thing they're having there.
I was trying to write left-handed. Listening and writing and thinking, they don't go together. And last thing is, they are still working on a master -- I'm not listening. Still working on a master plan to be submitted to the city. That's it.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Leachman?
I did not have a meeting to go to other than the Main Street, but we are having an experience El Dorado meeting on April the 12th, so it'll be interesting to see where everything's going on that, talking about the program we're going to put on.
Looking forward to hearing about that. Commissioner Lewis?
I was in Louisville last week, so, but the K254 did meet and they did a press release. It's on Facebook and it's on several other things out there, but the KDOT released. I'll let David talk about that when he gets up, but, and he hasn't met him so far this month. They'll meet on a Thursday.
Thanks, sir.
The Friends of the Library are having their book sale, bake sale, the end of this month, 27th through 30th. Mr. Warren Martin, the guy from Kansas Strong, will be doing a presentation tomorrow. Starts at 6:30 and have refreshments there at the library. And it is National Library Week, started last weekend, ends the 9th. So they've got a lot of stuff going on over there. They're doing well, so.
Good. Thank you. EFABC hasn't met this month, so I don't have an update there. I would like to mention, had the opportunity last week to go to the groundbreaking ceremony for the Kansas Oil Museum's Education Center. It's really exciting stuff that's coming up. If you get a chance, be sure and visit the Kansas Oil Museum. They've got some information down there about that, along with, you know, some of their other displays and some of their traveling exhibits that they have going on now. It's a great facility. It was really neat listening to some of the people that got them talked about their experiences at the Kansas Oil Museum. As I said that night, it's one of the first places that I went to go visit when we moved to town when I was in high school, and I've been back numerous times since, and I love it there. It's a lot of history. It's a lot of history about our area, about Kansas and oil in general, but certainly the history around El Dorado and the impact that we've had on the oil industry, not just in the United States, but throughout the world. So the education center is going to be a big facility that we'll be able to bring groups into and do classes there and really talk about energy and oil in Kansas. So excited for that to happen. I would pay attention maybe to the Kansas Oil Museum's Facebook page as they come up and come out with more announcements and updates, but the groundbreaking was last As Commissioner Wilkinson mentioned, this Thursday is Thankful Thursday downtown. It's a lot of fun, a good opportunity to get downtown and visit some businesses in the evenings. Last week, and I don't know if David's going to give us an update on how the conversation went, at the same time that I was at the groundbreaking for the Oil Museum, some of the other commissioners were down here for a work session or a special meeting to discuss the Evergy Downtown Undergrounding Project, and I think it sounds like it was a pretty robust discussion, and you guys kind of jump in and correct me, you know, if I missed anything here, but really the takeaway, my understanding is that the takeaway was that the businesses downtown just want to be able to maintain as many parking places as we can and maximize citizens' access to their businesses, whether it's for parking or walking. So I think it's a great project. I think there's a way, a path forward for it, which we need to maintain, try to do our best to maintain the parking that we can. Was that kind of the gist?
Yep.
Okay. And then I had a question. When is the Spring Cleanup Trash Day like that we do every year with the unlimited?
I'll have to find out.
Okay, if you could, I know I've seen it on the city's Facebook page, but I went back to try to find it, you know, I'm not very technologically savvy, so I wasn't able to find it. So if you guys find it, maybe throw it up there again. I know it's usually coming up. It's usually like right around tax day. My dad's an accountant. He always said it always happens the weekend of April 15th, so he never had a chance to put his trash out, so he was busy. But just let me know, or if you could put it out there, I'd appreciate it.
Yep.
And Easter's coming up, so everyone have a good Easter, and I think tonight's a basketball game that some people are going to be watching, but other than that, there's not a whole lot going on. So that's all I've got. City managers report.
Well, sales tax continues to show signs of another record-breaking year. The city received a little over $263,000 from sales tax collected on retail sales in the spring of January. Year-to-date, we're trending about 17% higher than last year, which would have been like, I believe, the third or fourth consecutive record-breaking year in a row. So at this pace, we will break $3 million by the end of the year, but it's still pretty early. That's based on just a handful, well, just basically the first quarter of sales tax receipts. So we'll give you a praise of that. Something that you will notice here very soon is KDOT is going to begin construction work on US 77 Bridge. The good news is that the project has officially started, but the better news is that it hasn't actually shut down traffic yet, or at least narrowed, constricted traffic. So traffic will always be flowing on the bridge. They're not going to shut the bridge down, but they will reduce it from its current four lanes down to two lanes. So eventually, there will be one lane going northbound and one lane going southbound. So there will be some delays during the project, and then, of course, once they leave the one side of the bridge, they'll switch into the other side of the bridge. So we are looking at the project being completed sometime around mid-June. And that's, of course, based on weather and a number of other factors, but the contractor in KDOT, as well as state staff, participated in pre-construction meeting and kind of went over some of the details with that project. And KDOT has apprised us that they're going to do their best to try to make it as, try to reduce the inconvenience as much as possible, although it is a construction project, and there will be, there will be obviously delays with respect to that project. So that's basically what we have right now on that. Let's see, what else we have going on? As Commissioner Lewis mentioned, KDOT also put out a press release last week about the K254 corridor management study. That study will be paid for in partnership with KDOT, as well as several local governments along the K254 corridor between El Dorado and Wichita. Those local governments include Butler County and Central County, excuse me, as well as the cities of Bel Air, Benton, El Dorado, Kichai, Park City, Tuana, and Wichita. So it's a pretty incredible study because it does involve so many local partners. The planning effort is expected to take 12 to 15 months, and when this is all done, there will be a capital plan that has identified safety improvements as well as capital improvements that could be done along the K254 corridor to improve not only the safety aspects of the corridor, but also the long-term usability of the corridor. So in terms of logistics, freight movements, commute movements, and how do we make that safe and how do we balance the land use that will be coming in the future, that plan will kind of be the guiding document moving forward. So as a result of that, they'll be asking for input from folks along the corridor, including the City of El Dorado. So we'll be looking at our future land use maps and looking at our planning and kind of putting that all in together as part of that effort. KDOT is also working with the Kansas Truck Bike Authority and the City of El Dorado on the K254. on the K254, I-35, K-96 interchange study. That will kind of be another piece of that. There are two different studies, but they're kind of looking at definitely the transportation within our region and within our immediate area as well. So if we were to land a large economic development project, for example, that may trigger improvements either to the road network and/or to the interchange system on the turnpike. And these studies will help determine what that may look like short term as well as long term. So those are definitely much-needed studies to help us understand what those needs will be in the future. Let's see. And so for right now, I think that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Do you all have any questions for David? All right, well, I see that we don't have, there's no executive session tonight. So if there's nothing else, I would consider a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Goes opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, all.